Meeting to order, would you please take the roll call?
Dr. Chase.
Present.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, please stand for the presentation of the National Colors and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Present. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we'd like to thank cadets Peters, Schrader, Scott, and Kushner from Mountain View High School's Marine Corps JROTC.
New JROTC.
No, they've been-
They've been there for two years, that right?
Two years, two years.
Right, two years, it's got a history.
Let's see.
All right, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Young, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item four, awards and recognition, student awards and recognition. We're going to recognize Ms. Anna Marie Bellino, fine and performing arts facilitator for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Kizner. It's my pleasure to recognize four of our instrumentalists who've received state and national recognition. I would like to begin by recognizing two fantastic jazz musicians from our school division. This fall, these two young men auditioned and were selected for the 2018 VMEA Music Educators All Virginia Jazz Ensemble. Students, when I call your name, please come forward, and audience, please hold your applause until the end, thank you. We're going to start with Kyle Smith. Kyle is a percussionist, he's a junior at Colonial Forge High School. This is his third year in a row that he's held a top honor in the Commonwealth as a drum set player. And if you've never seen Kyle play the drum set, he like dances. It's the coolest thing you've ever seen, he's very, very gifted. And what I'd also like to recognize Davis Smith, excuse me, Davis is a trumpet player from Stafford High School. This is Davis's second year in All Virginia Jazz, and this year, he was the third trumpet in the state. And his claim to fame as a jazzer, as we know them, is he's a squealer. So, he's a great player, but he's the guy in the Stratus Theater playing, and he is also just a delight to listen to. So, if the audience would, and you all would, please join me in congratulating these two young men. Woo! Next, I would like to recognize two students from Colonial Forge High School who have received national honors. They were members of the National Association for Music Education, which is NAFME. That is our national organization. And NAFME has national honor ensembles that represent the top performing high school musicians in the United States. It's a comprehensive musical and educational experience. And in order to be considered for a national ensemble, the students have to have participated in their state event the previous year. So, these ladies are seniors this year, and last year, as juniors, they were in our all-state band and orchestra. This year's national event was held at Disney's Coronado Springs Resort in Orlando, Florida from November 25th to 28th. Not a bad place to be, right? A little fun in the park. So, I would like for Sydney Salata and Jaylen Minz to please come forward to be recognized. Sydney is a very talented French horn player, and Jaylen is a sousaphone player in the marching band, and she is a bass clarinetist in the concert band. So, we're very proud of these two ladies as well on their national honor. Could you all join me in giving them a round of applause as well? While they're taking pictures too, I would just like to recognize their band directors, Mr. Rob Gillette, who was at Colonial Forge High School, Mr. Eddie Steenstra at Stafford High School, and their administrators for their support, and of course, you as well, thank you.
Thank you, that brings us to 4.02, a proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month. Ms. Young, would you read this for us?
Sure. A proclamation to designate February 2019 as Career and Technical Education Month. Whereas each February has been nationally recognized as National Career and Technical Education Month since 2008, and whereas economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of today's workplace, placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education are part of the foundation of a strong, well-educated, modern workforce that fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to Virginia's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas through career and technical education, students gain meaningful experience in practical applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics. And whereas adults can improve their lives with career and technical education by learning new skills that will provide them with more career choices, expanded earning potential, and greater job satisfaction. And whereas the cooperative and ever-increasing efforts between career and technical educators, administrators, and representatives of business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of the new Virginia economy by preparing citizens for careers in high demand, high wage, technologically skilled areas in a global economy. And whereas the year's theme, "Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow," demonstrates the crucial role that career and technical education plays in readying our students for successful careers. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County School Board that February 2019 shall be recognized as Career and Technical Education Month in Stafford County Public School, adopted by the Stafford County Board this day, 22nd day of January 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
You're so welcome.
That brings us to 4.03, recognition, Virginia's School Principals Appreciation Week. Dr. Chase.
Whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school staff and student body, and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process. And whereas principals serve as educational leaders responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools. And whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school. And whereas principals must work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens. And whereas Virginia's School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia's school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now, therefore, I, Ralph S. Northem, do hereby recognize January 20th to the 26th, 2019, as Virginia's School Principals Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia. And I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. That brings us to citizen comments. Dr. Chase.
Hold on, I gotta get back to the right place here. No. Individuals wishing, whoops, I gotta turn my thing- Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairwoman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. We have four people who signed up this evening, I'm gonna call those four names. And then after those speakers have addressed the board, anyone else that wishes to address the board can come forward. And we have a sign-in sheet for you to sign after you finish your comments. The first four don't have to sign in because they already have. The first speaker is Matt Lenz, the second is Alan Watkins, the third is Olga Hernandez, and fourth is Sandy V. Morrison.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Kizner. I am speaking on behalf of the Red for Ed Movement, and I'd like to begin by introducing myself. My name is Matthew Lentz. I am a 22-year teacher, but I'm brand-new to Stafford County. I come from Arizona where I was very active in my local and very active in the Red for Ed Movement. And you may have heard about what happened in Arizona last year. I hope we don't have to get to that point here in Virginia. But we organized and made a list of demands to our state legislature to fund our schools appropriately 'cause it's what's best for kids, and they laughed at us. So, we did walk out. Now, like Virginia, Arizona's a right-to-work state, yet we still walked out. Again, I hope it doesn't get to that point. But Virginia's not Arizona. Virginia's better than that. Stafford County is better than that. And we know how important our children are. They are our future. And I'm asking you to please support the Red for Ed Movement because it's what's best for kids. Things were really bad in Arizona, but again, Virginia is not Arizona. Since 2008, they cut drastically the school funding for the schools, which is why we inevitably moved over here because I want my daughter to take music education, I want my daughter to have art education. Two of the things that were first cut from Arizona. But we can do this together. We had the full support of our school board across Arizona, and we're hoping that we have the full support of the school board here in Stafford County. Again, we know it's the best thing for our future, it's the best thing for our kids, and I ask you again for your support, thank you.
Question number two. Good evening, Dr. Kizner, members of the school board, and everyone present here and viewing at home. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Al Watkins, an Acquah resident and a teacher at Colonial Forge, and tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the SEA and all actualities, speaking on behalf of everyone involved with education here in Stafford County. As you're aware, this morning, I emailed each board member and Dr. Kizner asking them to consider possibly moving the planned professional workday from this coming Tuesday, the 29th, to Monday, the 28th. I knew full well that this would potentially inconvenience some, cause some people to change their plans and meet with some detractors. People who would consider the change in the school calendar to be very late, inconsiderate of their activities, and thus not acceptable. There's no doubt that some may be inconvenienced, but the potential benefits outweigh any inconvenience tremendously. Truth be told though, it's not the school calendar that hasn't changed often at the end of the first semester anyway. Inclement weather caused half-days of instruction to become full days. Midterms were canceled a few days ago, which ultimately resulted in only this Tuesday being the only professional workday, even though the grades can be submitted by all through and up until Friday on the middle of the day. But you see, that last instructional day, Monday, January 28th, is not just another school day. It's also one of the most important days that I've encountered here in my 15 years of Stafford County. Down in Richmond, educators, parents, students, school leaders, superintendents, Board of Ed members will all be joining together, partnering in an amazing opportunity. The opportunity to finally start the state of Virginia back on the road to properly funding education. Monday, the 28th, is VEA Lobby Day. Meetings with legislators are planned for 9:00 a.m. and a rally at the state Capitol at noon. I don't have to tell you the importance of General Assembly passing Governor Northem's budget amendment providing $268 million more dollars to the K-12 funding. You are well-aware of how desperate Stafford County is for additional funding, especially if it assists greatly increasing pay for all of its employees. A number of teachers have requested leave for the coming Monday, and almost 400 surveyed staff members identified they wanted to go to Richmond if they were able. This SEA has asked that you consider this additional schedule change this semester that the workday be moved to Monday instead of Tuesday. Regular classes ending the first semester would then take place on Tuesday, the 29th. This would eliminate the conflicts of not possibly having enough substitutes to cover classes on Monday. There would be no negative impact on instruction or, and there would be a cost savings, excuse me. It would provide a viable choice for Stafford educators to actively engage and advocate for everyone in this county. A strong showing would show legislators that a reversal of educational budget cutting needs to happen now. I also hope that you will have the opportunity to please join us and make this day happen. Thank you very much. I hate to say it too, but I had to actually create a very cheesy invitations personally for you, even though they're terrible. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Sandy Morrison, and I live at 2157 Acquah Drive, but I am not here representing Acquah Harbor. I'm here to speak about the redistricting from an analyst's perspective. So, I am a social scientist by training, and I'm a research analyst and supervisor a little bit north of here. I can't even imagine all the emails that have been flooding your inboxes, mostly complaining about these options. Wouldn't it be nice if there was an email with solutions? A solution that follows all of your criteria, that addresses capacity, connectedness, and proximity, that brings more neighborhoods together like Hampton Oaks, Austin Ridge, Park Ridge, and the Acquah Harbor, that eliminates the need to transfer 541 students as listed in Plan A, that does not pick winners and losers, but makes winners of us all, that justifies every step proposed, and that provides in-back data for all of these steps. Wouldn't that be nice? Wouldn't it be nice to have a proposal that makes families more hopeful? I think it's time to check your inbox again. I think you'll get all of that and more in Plan A 2.0. Again, I'm a research analyst. I spent about 30 hours this weekend not cleaning my house and working on this project because I wanted to improve all of Stafford's options. Unfortunately, I was only able to work through the schools up north, but someone, not me, could go ahead and do the same process for the schools down south. Let's open up our minds and our hearts to common-sense solution, let's clean this all up. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Olga Hernandez. I'd first like to thank you for the opportunity to be heard this evening. I attended the previous meetings, this is about the redistricting regarding the redistricting that was presented by Arc Consultants, and I'm extremely concerned that as a community, this decision will be made in haste. Huge factors were not considered for these options, transportation, efficiency of time with children, and cost, busing kids in neighborhoods that you're busing kids out of, the ever-source pot for splitting our neighborhoods and dividing some of these families, again, just to name a few things. I have learned more about APUs, feeder schools, connectivities, and demographics in the last couple of weeks than I thought ever possible. At the January 15th meeting, Arc Bridge said there was no in-depth analysis completed on transportation that perhaps one will be completed later. Stafford County's traffic culture is something that must be considered, whether it's 610, 95, or Route 1, these arteries only need a slight fender bender to throw off transportation for two hours where we don't see our kids for two hours. There are a shortage of drivers, the time spent on these buses are too long. This has to be evaluated and considered for this redistricting. The demographic slides, which had huge change from one week to another, were also troubling to me. If diversity was in fact a consideration, how can we justify the numbers on these slides? Some schools look to be set up for more funding, but failure at the same time. The faculties at these schools will all be faced with all new students, they don't know the historical, they don't know their families, they don't know, they didn't have their big brothers. So, many unknowns, and let's add some language barriers to that and wrap it up in a small bow of a month for the transition. I know I'm advocating for my children right now, but I also hope that this county takes a look at these numbers and sees the perception that this is putting out there. If either of these plans, as-is, go forward. We are a county of military, government, and lifers. I was told the other day that I was a lifer, I looked at them kinda crazy, but I have been here since 2006 and have no intention of leaving anytime soon. Our communities have become families, especially those who are far away from home. There is strength and comfort to us brought by finding that someone in your neighborhood can get your kid to an activity, pick them up from the bus stop, soccer practice. We have spouses deployed from military, other families for assistance that make all this magic happen. Therefore, while I understand that putting this task of drawing the lines to a non-biased outsider was removing that huge human factor, I believe that human factor is unique to our county. It might not be the number-one priority, but I am incredulous that it is not a factor at all. Our children were stacked with cards that were reshuffled and dealt out to the schools with the number-one priority being, let's meet a percentage. Removing all human factor of this consideration, I just don't think that that's the right way to go for us. We have had some ridiculously committed parents, a couple of women I am in awe of right now. They have looked at Stafford County as a whole. They've taken presented and presented options and attempted to find a better way. I know our children are resilient, strong, and intelligent. We test them daily, we're in a society, we have actor shooter drills at our schools.
Ms. Hernandez, can you wrap this up because our time is up?
I have to explain to my kids, and they are resilient, but do we have to push them right now to be resilient for this? Can we just take a pause and consider the other options, whether it be the 2.0? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
My mic's signed in, I just missed the initial cutoff, I apologize.
Oh, that's fine, you just sign in when you finish.
Absolutely.
But we need you to give us your name and where you live.
Absolutely. My name is Mike Johnson, I'm a resident of the Rock Hill District, reside in Eastern View subdivision, which is made up of approximately 150 single-family homes. Of the two options presented, I would have to support and advocate for option B. I would like to present some factual support for why option B is a better choice for our community. Of the two options presented, we either remain at Garrisonville, option B, or get moved to Kate Waller-Barratt, option A. It should be noted that although I do not agree with how great schools measures our schools, that moves me from currently a school rated A3 to a school rated A7, so most people would consider that a step up. Although I don't want my children to move schools, I agree with the superintendent that all schools in Stafford will provide my children with a quality education. What I'm more concerned about is the distance from my home and the feeder patterns. I'm not against moving schools, a proposal for Rock Hill and/or Park Ridge would make more sense than option A presents for our community. Option B for our children has us going to the second-closest elementary school. Still not the closest, but understandable as it's most unused in capacity in the county. Option A proposes sending our children to the fourth-closest elementary school. Moves our kids out of a school that's by far the lowest capacity in the county. Additionally, for parents east on 610, which we are, that would now have to pick up, drop off, or after-school activities would have no direct manner to do so. We'd have to drive past Barrett Heights Road to Center Street due to the concrete median on 610. Feeder patterns must be considered for the mental well-being of our children. Today, Eastern View is the furthest east neighborhood on 610 that attends Garrisonville, one of the furthest east neighborhoods on 610 that attends AG Wright, and the furthest west neighborhood that attends North Stafford. Note, we live across the street. Today, as it stands, our children in our community have a horrible feeder pattern from middle to high school, which my wife and I have been emailing about for five years because that is a concern. Option B adds metal arc and suburban estates to our feeder pattern from Garrisonville to AG Wright, and then those children move with us from AG Wright to North Stafford without adding second lonely transition from elementary to middle for the children of our neighborhood. Option A, however, causes dramatic loss of logical feeder patterns in the transition from elementary to middle to kids who already have a strained feeder pattern from middle to high school. This would produce undue stress, absolutely violates the county's guidelines on trying to protect and maintain feeder patterns for the students. It does this while sending our kids to a school further away than three other elementary schools. Option A moves our kids from the lowest-capacity school in the county to not the closest, not the second-closest, not the third-closest, but the fourth-closest elementary school with limited access east on 610. Option A disrupts feeder patterns for our children from elementary to middle and maintains a bad feeder pattern from middle to high. If option A was chosen, our children would continue to go to a middle school sandwiched between two elementary schools that are closer than the one presented in option A. I understand and respect the tough decision that you have to make in the coming weeks. I hope the facts that I presented can assist you in understanding why option B is the best fit of the two for our family and neighborhood. If the school board does decide on option A is best for the county, I hope that the facts presented are sufficient evidence why our neighborhood should be reviewed to remain in Garrisonville. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and thanks for listening to my concerns. Do you need a copy for the record or anything?
Yes, I would, and Ms. Hall, could you please share that with the consultant as well? Yes, you can give it to our clerk, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Also, if you have that in an email, could you email it?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board, Madam Chair, Dr. Kizner, my name is Joe Gottse, I live in the Falmouth District. At a work session earlier tonight, it was introduced, presented, floated that there will be a drastic change in middle school instruction for 2019, 2020. Whether or not this change has been necessitated by the current nationwide shortage of teachers or the lack of funding from the Board of Supervisors seems to be unsubstantiated, but definitely possible. This sudden departure over shortened summer break from the widely-accepted learning-teaching concept of middle school will return sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to junior high schools overnight. Gone will be shared planning times, schools within schools. Why? Because there are not enough English and math teachers available due to funding, or a lack thereof from the Board of Supervisors. When block scheduling was introduced as a pilot model in the early 2000s, enhanced instruction and hands-on activities were touted as the reason for the change. 84-minute blocks will be better for kids was the banner. The fact that block scheduling allowed teachers to increase their workloads from five classes of 30 kids to six classes of 30 kids went quietly unmentioned. Teachers, get ready. As a teacher hired in 1995 on a pay scale that promised a 30th-year salary of $80,005, I can tell you that my $62,000 is about 18 grand short. That's not a total, that's for this current fiscal year. If we went to back pay, that would be something over $100,000. My wife is a teacher in Stafford, she's been here since 1995, she's in the same boat. $100,000 of what we were promised in 1995 based on it's only 25-8 now, but it will be this in 30 years. Stafford County has the means to fund their educational system. As the school board and its superintendent, it is your priority to ask for the funding required to do that job. If the Board of Supervisors wants to say, "No, our kids are not worth the funding," then it's on them. Don't be the bad guys for them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? No, seeing none, we'll close the public citizen comment period and come back to the board for board reports. Dr. Chase, do we have a Student Discipline Committee report? Let's save this on here. Let me see if I've got it. It's December. Well, I- I was gonna say we do it next meeting. On December 20th, whoops, sorry.
On December 20th, a committee of the school board met to consider three student disciplinary matters. The committee suspended- The committee suspended student A for the remainder of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year with all but seven school days held in abeyance, expelled student B, and continued the expulsion for student C with alternative education offered.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. That brings us to board committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
I have the map.
Dr. Chase, you have finance and budget committee?
Yeah. Okay. So, the finance and budget committee met on January sixteenth. The school board clerk emailed all the handouts from the meeting to members of the board. We received a report on the bathroom inventory. Staff has prepared a survey that will get filled out for each of the schools. If it is the will of the board, staff will prepare a cost estimate to remove urinals from all the boys bathrooms and replace them with stalls. We were given a report on the cost to transport students for educational programs such as IB. We were told that students could use the same buses that are currently used to transport students for other special programs, so there should be no additional cost. However, we noted that students for the IB program would be changing their home school for the entire day, not just part of the day. However, perhaps the IB offerings could be modified to make it work as a half-day program like CGS. We were given an update on the compensation study for administrative staff. The study is still in process. The consultants who are conducting the study sent out a survey. Unfortunately, the return of surveys has been slow. Apparently, it is going to take a bit longer to get the results. Dr. Kizner has also suggested that we look into paying staff more than, more often than once a month in order to be more competitive with surrounding districts. However, this would require additional staff in the payroll office. We were given a report on vacancies that are being filled with long-term subs. We also received a follow-up presentation of a proposal for compressing the teacher's salary scale. Dr. Kizner indicated that we need to develop a plan to put this in place, and we will not be able to implement anything this year. Finally, we discussed elementary school capacity and what percentages of capacity should trigger planning and then building a new school. As a result of approving using maximum staffing standards to calculate building capacity, we need to reassess the trigger point for a new school. Staff is working to determine what percentage of capacity should be the trigger. And then I also had the CGS governing board, but it was rescheduled or postponed.
Thank you. Dr. Chase, and Ms. Hazard?
Just one, our legislative committee will be meeting very briefly tomorrow just for an update on rapidly-moving bills. I will report that our one regarding VRS, that we had some language changes with the substitute that ended up being offered. I was called to go down to Richmond, stood there. I didn't have to speak to it, but they ended up getting the committee language changed, which was, and I think it's already on third reading, so it has moved through the Senate, which is great news for us.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. That brings us to superintendent comments. Dr. Kizner?
I, I have a few comments. First comment is really more of a question for you to think about or maybe even answer tonight. We've had two town hall meetings on the redistricting. You heard a few citizens tonight discuss it. We've received hundreds, I'll just use the word, hundreds of emails. I'm just wondering if it would be benefit to have an evening or time-dedicated work session type of agenda just to talk about the redistricting. So...
And, Dr. Kizner, you have a presentation to us at a special meeting next Tuesday, correct?
Yes.
On the budget? How long do you anticipate?
Thirty, forty minutes at the most.
Okay. And what time is that scheduled for? Do you, Missy?
I have it at seven.
Seven? Um, is there any interest in the board in scheduling a work session after that presentation? Probably be before eight?
Based on having a, I mean, there would be stipulations for me. I don't want to meet if we're not going to be presented with a certain amount of information in a certain manner.
I, I, what kind of information would you like presented?
Well, we had asked for, we had asked for the informa, the conversation that we had at our Saturday meeting where we wanted all of the information kind of put into, yeah, yeah, all of the questions kind of lumped together from the various neighborhoods, if there were repeat questions. I would just like for Arkbridge to go through the emails, all of the questions that have come up at the town halls, organize them into, you know, lists with like-information. That way, if we're going to meet, and I'd love to do so, but I'd like for it to be a productive meeting that's organized beforehand for us, please.
Any other comments? I think it would be helpful if the board discussed where we go from here. I mean, I haven't heard anyone say, "I love A," well, on the board, independently, you know, "I love one, I love the other, it's perfect." I mean, I've heard a lot of flaws under both the options. And clearly, based on what we've heard so far in the town hall meetings, what we've heard in the public comments, what I expect will hear tomorrow at the third and final town hall meeting, and this evening is before we have the public hearings, you know, we've, we've got a lot to digest. And that's, you know, I agree with you, Ms. Decatur, it'd be nice to, to have that summary, but do we, do we want to just even talk about where we go from here? You know, we've got a short timeframe, you know, do we send it back? Do we do it ourselves? Do we, you know, do, something in between? I'm not suggesting any of these methods, but I think it's a discussion that we need to have as a board.
Well, I, I think, if you would indulge me for a second, after going back and looking through all of the minutes from all of our meetings that we had the discussion about redistricting, there was, there's a common theme, and the common theme is, is that each one of us had our, our own priority as far as the criteria goes, of which we've never had a meeting about to put out on the table, this, these are the priorities of this redistricting or the, or the criteria that will make the redistricting. We've never, we never had that meeting. So, there's a bunch of, each of us had, had something that was of importance to us that never made it into the plan development. So, I think that's going to be part of, an important part of the discussion as we go forward in trying to narrow down what it is that we're going to consider.
I, I just have a question, if I may. May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure. My question was that the public constituents have been asking for answers, and I just want to make sure, I didn't check it yet, but are we answering the questions on this website or no?
We are answering questions. We're answering question individually. We're referring people to the website. We are putting things on there, the questions, as I mentioned to you last week, the volume and the staff that we have are not aligned, but we are moving as fast and trying to be accurate. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I appreciate, Dr. Kizner, what you and your staff has done, including with the board of supervisors, because it's a, it's, you know, a team effort, and I know they've been working long hours with the principals and, and opening up their schools, so we appreciate your help and all the effort. Thank you.
Ms. Hazard?
I just had one comment because I think it sounds like the meeting that night, at first I was going to say, I know there's some documents and things that I think several of us have asked for. Is that the meeting that we want to have that information available, or is this for us to talk about really where we're going forward? And for me, the reason that may decide what I want to say on the second part is if it's a work meeting for us, then I think we should start before seven o'clock to hear Dr. Kizner. But if it's more of a, where do you think we go from here? That's probably a half-hour, forty-minute discussion, but if it's a, we're going to review information and sort of do that, that may be a much longer meeting. So, I think I'm hearing it's a meeting of the board to kind of, where are we and where do we want to go? But I, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get some, does that make sense?
That was a question that I raised. Does the board want to have that discussion, which I think would be very helpful to have that discussion before we get into some of this other? Meanwhile, I would hope that someone is coordinating with the consultants to be putting this together, you know, for us. I, I know we're saving, you know, all the emails are being, you know, consolidated, correct, Ms. Hall?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so, so everything that is sent to any one of us, you know, will be in a single place, but I think only this board can decide how we're going to move forward. Where? Yes.
And I just, and I'd like to echo, I think everyone said a little bit of something that I'd like to say, but, so, before we get into the whole, you know, that mosh pit of emails and, first of all, we need to make sure, are we, is the board going to move forward with redistricting? Yes, no? And that needs to be a vote. Is the board going to move, go with a Plan A or a Plan B? That needs to be a vote, right? Is the board going to, from there, make a Plan C or a Plan A or Alpha or Plan One? You know, and then is the board going to come up with criteria that we're going to try to box ourselves in to, to try to move forward with? Once we say, yes, we're going to redistrict, yes, we're going to vote on a plan, yes, we're going to, here's the criteria that we're going to take and, and we're going to change the plan with. That's going to be the first thing, because if we just get into the data dump to us about all this stuff, and then we come, yeah, that's all great, and we've had ten town halls and we're doing great, and, ah, no, we're not going to redistrict. Can I get a vote? Four votes go away, and then it all goes away, right? So, I think we just need to tee it up. Tee it up, so if we're going to have this meeting, we've got to tee up certain key decision points. That's my, that's my input.
Dr. Chase, do you have any comments?
Nothing additional to what's been said.
Now, keep in mind, we have not had our public hearings yet, you know, on this. So, this is, I would say this is a preliminary addressing the issue, but I don't, I, I don't think it's fair to us or the public not to have this discussion. There's just, there's too much. This is not, certainly not what I had expected when we went forward with the contract. I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but I think I'm hearing a little of that. If, if, I mean, it's an opportunity because we've already got the night planned. We're going to be here at seven o'clock. Dr. Kizner said it'll take about...
I, I could do it thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. Well, we don't, we, we, what you're doing is very important, so we don't want to, for you to feel constrained. For, for once, I'm not going to say, keep to your time. This, this is different. This is the superintendent's presentation of the budget. So, if you think you can do it in thirty, I'd say, let's expect up to an hour, okay? But that would start us at eight. Looks like we may get out of here early tonight so we can get a little extra sleep tonight. Save it for next week.
Just one question.
Yes.
What, someone mentioned, and I can't remember who, maybe it was you, do we, or do we start, is there an option to start a little early, maybe with the superintendents? Because you're right, it might be a thirty-minute brief, however, it's going to be, you know, times four minutes to each board member. You know, I, I mean, I don't know.
Well, we don't have to ask questions. I mean, it's, it's a superintendent's presentation of the budget. I mean, traditionally, I think the board listens and absorbs it and then goes back and studies it, thinks about it, and, you know, comes back at a, a later date. And, and I know some of us, it's more difficult.
It's difficult, yeah.
To get here early. And, and also, there are members of the public that may want to, to come, although I, I tell you, this, this television is great. I mean, people can watch it from home, be more comfortable, and, you know, for the live, and then the ones that were the work sessions, you know, they're just on for the, the next day. So, I, I, unless there's some overwhelming desire, I'd say, let's stick with the, the seven. But, I mean, do we want to, to ask for the data and have a data discussion, or do we just want to have a general discussion about the direction that we plan to proceed in?
Well, I, I don't know what staff is able to, to bring, but I, I agree with Ms. Decatur that having, if there are some common themes that are coming through, it would be nice to know what those are. But if, if they're not ready yet, then they're not ready, and maybe then we would talk about moving forward. I'm sorry about that.
So, what, what might be helpful is two things. One, I've noticed in a few questions that people have asked, just referring them to the Stafford website link has helped answer their question. We're putting more and more information on there, and people have, have responded, "Thank you." I, I, you know, this has helped, and in some cases, they want even more. So, if you could think between now and, say, Thursday-ish, if there's data, even if it's not in an email that you have received, there's still some information you're lacking to help you make a decision, you know, please email me, and we will get it to the staff of two, and, and, well, it's one, two, three, depending on your question, and we will work our best to get you the information for Tuesday evening.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's premature to be talking about making decisions on one of the two options because we haven't had the public hearings. But I think there's been enough questions raised, you know, about the, the proposals, the plans, the timing, you know, otherwise, that it would, it would be helpful. That's just my opinion. So, I mean, it wouldn't break my heart if y'all don't want to, you know, meet on it and we go home after the budget, but I think it's an opportunity that we can take because this clock is, is, is ticking more quickly than we...
So, I, I, I know that one of the common themes that everyone, regardless of Plan A or B, is neighborhood, people wanting to stay in their neighborhood. If we could even pull one to have a discussion on, that would be one that I think everyone could agree on. But it's, it's hard. People wanting to stay in their neighborhood.
I'm willing, I, I mean, I think that night, we need to talk through broad processes. I, I agree with that. I, I didn't mean to stir the pot, but I, I was trying to understand if our timing is because of, I think there are a few things that we have asked for already that we would like that aren't additional, but I think coming out of that session, I hope we, as a board, will have some targeted requests based on what we discuss, and I think we need to discuss, discuss it. So, I'm fine at seven. I only threw it out just depending on what we thought the, that meeting was going to be, so I'm fine at seven. I just threw it out as an idea.
Does anyone, you know, have any discussions, questions they'd like to put on there, you know, for it, or do we just want to have a state of the union? State of the division. That's a good one, Ms. Egan. State of the division.
You know, you know what, I'm not going to restate what I said, so, I think we need processes.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, if I could just be so bold, I, in, in the current plans that we have, we have two plans that are really similar. I, I mean, we really do, and, and I was really hoping for something that was for, if we were going to receive two options, maybe two options that were vastly different so that we could compare and contrast. I, the way I would see our conversation going is, well, you've already said it, I, but I think, like we said, we've contracted for, for three to five. We're paying someone to do this job. I don't see us then taking the two plans and fixing them ourselves. I think, I see us taking the two plans and saying, this is what works for our neighborhood, this is what doesn't work for our neighborhood or our community, our county, and, and then handing it back and saying, this is what we need. And so, that's kind of the conversation that I envision us having.
Well, let me...
Oh, so I just restated what you said. Okay.
And, and a calendar. Timing is going to be critical.
Do we want, do we want a Plan C? I mean, the consultants have a lot of feedback already. Okay, is, you know, the feedback, truthfully, and I say this respectfully, are, are very similar. I, I, I'm not really hearing a lot recently of new feedback. So, I believe if, if the board has a, a desire, between now and next Tuesday, they could surely put together a Plan C.
Based on what?
What's that?
On the criteria that we established.
Okay. No, we're, they're saying...
I mean, I, I just want to know because...
We need to know based on what?
Yeah.
Based on the feedback.
But we, the only, I, I agree with that, but we may not have gotten all the feedback yet because some people are waiting. You know, what we've got is important. I think tomorrow, there will be, you know, more feedback, and we'll be in a different part of the, the community, so, you know, we may have some similar people, you know, who've attended all, but it, it may be different, but...
Then add to it.
I, I think last week, the weather kept a lot of people away from Stafford Middle School, so I would guarantee that there's going to be a lot of choir representation tomorrow night.
So, we're going to need to make sure we've got lots of chairs.
Right.
Set up, you know, for that, or, or bleachers. that, or bleachers available because I do think, and, and this is the last one, and it's supposed to be 50 degrees tomorrow, so.
We have some chairs outside.
So I'm hearing not to be, maybe after tomorrow night, it doesn't really get to Irene's question about the criteria. We've been looking at, or the consultants have been looking at balancing the, the school sizes and proximity. That's been the two driving ones. If there's others, instead of them going back with those as, you know, you've seen the list, they've presented the criteria every time. If that criteria is not what the objective of the school board is, then it probably doesn't make sense for them to do anything for Plan C until that conversation is clarified.
Well, well, even with that, if that were the criteria, and I'm not saying that that was the only criteria that was given to the consultants, if it were, then we're getting a significant amount of feedback that proximity is not being taken into consideration. I mean, we had a speaker tonight and, and I'm familiar with that neighborhood and the facts are accurate. That neighborhood is closer to three schools than it is to the one they were sent to. And not only is it that neighborhood, they went out a couple miles and moved them as well. So I, I've, I've seen emails from most people's districts that said, my, you know, my, my house is close here. People that are across the street from a school got moved to another one or, so if proximity were the case, I would like an explanation from the consultants as to how they applied proximity and came up with so many of these cases where they weren't the closest school. Not even close to being the closest.
And bus rides were another one, too. I mean, we, we had the same conversation during last redistricting. We've got people going from Marlborough Point now, you know, they're going to be sitting on the bus twice as long. So those are the types of things, the feedback that we've been getting from parents that we want to, we want incorporated in whatever Plan C is.
So maybe, maybe the strategy is to go to the 29th, to the school board to be, to give us better, give us a direction on the criteria, okay? And then we'll have all the town hall meetings completed and, and then if the board desires, we'll come up with a Plan C, maybe even a Plan D. The only thing I would just ask you to, which I know you know, there's a good chance then you're going to be impacting families that are not currently impacted. So the next question that you don't have to answer now is, in fairness to those families that have been sitting on the sidelines because they haven't been impacted, are we going to now create another series of town hall meetings and how long do you want this to go on based on the timeline you agreed on?
We just got to mention the timeline.
So I just, these are just logistic issues. You don't have to answer it tonight, but maybe next Tuesday, that should be part of the agenda.
But do we want to invite the, I'm sorry?
I just, I just wanted to remind everybody, the, the reason that we have public hearings is so that the feedback is taken back and ultimately incorporated into what our decision's going to be. So we can't very well just have three, three plans and then have public hearings and then honestly say that we've included everybody's comments and input into the third option. So I just want everybody to remember that. That's what the purpose of the public hearings is, is that we can take the feedback and, bring it back, discuss it or give it to the consultant and let them run with it, so.
I, I just want to make sure that any discussions or work sessions that we need to add in on the timeline that we currently have, because we, we set a timeline. I'm not sure where that, that's going to fit in.
Yeah, I don't have an update.
Right, and I, and I do have a concern about that timeline and I'm, I think everyone would agree with this, being bold here. But the timeline that was established showed the second public hearing, the same night this is coming to the board for action, and I don't think that's appropriate. I think we're going to have to, and I, I think I mentioned this early on, that's going to have to be extended. But what about if we invited the consultant to the work session next week? Would that be helpful?
That would be, that would be very appropriate.
Do you think? Would it be helpful?
And in that vein, from my perspective, because I have a lot of process questions in general of how, how it will be done and how we will put them in there. Are we going to be able to sit there and do it like we did last time where we move stuff? Or is this going to be, we're just going to get spit out a new plan and we'll have to figure it all out? So I have some of those because it also goes to the transparency of the process, but we have to understand the process to be able to tell people what it's going to be. So I think it would be very helpful.
That was my, and that, those were mirrored, and Ms. Decatur and everyone's kind of saying the same thing, I think, is the processes is where, I'm not saying we vote on A and B. That's not, hopefully it didn't come out like that. But, but we, we need to know the process by which, hold on, so if we, do we have to vote for an A and a B and then make changes from that or else it skews the whole follow-on system, you know? And then if, if, so inviting the, the contractor here for that, that's appropriate because that's the kind of question that probably we should get beforehand is, do we have to come up with a totally different APU unit and, and, and kind of move away from A and B totally? And so, so, I mean, those are the process questions we need to kind of get to and we need to get after. What, what is possible with, with the plans now? Do they totally different or do we, do we have to pick one and then make changes from that so it kind of mirrors down with our programming? I mean, I don't know.
Only thing I remember them saying, I might be wrong, but hopefully you heard the same thing, you can't have some of A and some of B.
Yeah, that was something that I wanted.
Well, that's my, that's my, that's my, that's my point. And if that's the case, then we may have to have a C and a D and an E. But I mean, but we need, we need to get there. We need to get to those processes and understand what we can and can't do as a board.
Dr. Kizner, may I ask, when the consultants do show up, is there a possibility you could bring their tool with them because perhaps we could actually see?
Oh, their, their calculations?
That, yeah, we could move some things and, you know, look and see what it's impacting, you know, even if it's C or D, if we've, a board member says, hey, what about Hampton Oaks? Can we move Hampton Oaks here? And then we will see how it will shift. They could actually show us and say, if we move this piece here, then it impacts this one. We could, you know, we could actually see that.
The answer is, I hope so. We need to provide you what you need...
I'm sorry?
...to make this difficult decision. So Scott, you're, you're noting all this right in your head? Yeah, I am.
Where's, where's Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, where's Mr. Tenenbaum?
Oh, I hope he's watching, taking notes.
Don't worry, this whole thing is recorded.
He can see it tomorrow.
But I, I, we, first of all, I'm going to see him tomorrow night, so I'll get all the answers tomorrow night.
Oh, that's right, we'll all be together again.
We'll be here tomorrow night together.
Not here.
Not here.
H H pool.
We get to spend another night together very, yeah, it's nice. All right, I got more. Are we done? No, no.
Superintendent's comments.
Yeah, yeah, cut. Take all my time. All right, wait a minute, here we go, I got plenty.
Is that three minutes?
No, no, that goes next. Okay. All right, yeah, thank you, yeah, I thought about that. All right.
All right, well, before you go forward, are we, we've decided we're going to have a work session following, and Missy put it on as immediately following the superintendent's presentation of the budget for, for a work session. We're going to invite the consultants and we are going to generally discuss the process and where we go from here. Does that sound reasonable? Any other suggestions? Anybody want to add anything to that? Yes?
In this room and do you want to televise or...
Oh, absolutely. Anything we do with the redistricting needs to be taped and it needs to be put on the website the next day. The public needs to know. If they can't come here, they need to have access to it because this, this is, you know, you, you can't miss one segment and keep up with it.
It's transparency, period.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Okay.
All right, so we're all in agreement? Good.
Okay, two, two other things. All right, Ferry Farm. I was wondering, it's been a while, seems like years ago, but we're still moving forward with, we're still moving forward with the project. We still have not got an official yes or no for the Board of Supervisors on the 1.9 million.
Keep asking.
We're, we're, you know, I'm having conversations with the county administrator and that, that ask is still happening. I would like to maybe recommend that we put on an agenda or at least have a discussion about that HVAC component because I think there was more than a consensus. I think everybody seemed to agree that that's, that should be a priority, which was part of the 1.9 million ask because we would have, we being staff, would have a proposal for the board to consider just in case the Board of Supervisors are, are not willing to fund the 1.9, how we could still do that component, okay? But there is, time is of essence on this to try to get some closure. So we're moving forward on the, on the original 8.1, whatever it was, eight, you know what I'm talking about. So maybe when we do agenda setting, we could...
We can do that. And there is a chair, vice chair meeting the first of the year, takes place on Thursday. So if the board wishes that Dr. Chase and I can bring that up with, with the chair and the vice chair of the Board of Supervisors on Thursday to see, you know, where they are on that and, you know, get a report back, you know, for us and let them know how important it is that we have...
Okay, okay.
Fine, sensitive.
And, and the last thing I do want to mention, so the VEA lobbying day is critically important. Even though it's the VEA lobbying day, it should be all people who are supporters of, of public education. There is no question that if you look at the trend in Virginia of state funding public schools, it has not been in a positive trajectory. And Governor Northam's budget helps get us into a better place. And looking at the preliminary numbers for Stafford, we would gain significantly if the General Assembly does support that budget. So I just want you to know, I'm planning on Monday to go there and in a sense, I'll be representing the school board because this is something that we all should reach out to our legislators and definitely be willing to talk about in a very supportive way. And I do thank the teachers that spoke tonight. In a sense, they're doing very important work, but we should be partners with them in that work, okay? So I was going to read this long thing, but I think my words are good enough. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Kizner, I understand that you provided an administrative day for one person from each of the schools, which has never been done before, and I think that really shows support for the, you know, the, the day enrichment. So thank you for that. I understand that, that the request coming in to switch those days is, is it not practical given the timing or that's the impression that I received?
It's, it's a question that I heard for the first time this morning through an email. The board could, could change. I have already communicated to, to parents, staff have, different schools have different professional activities scheduled. So I have set a schedule and that's what I'm planning to move forward with.
I'm just wanting to, to...
Yeah.
Put, put the, the, the reason out that it's not because it's not important, but that it's, there are other things that are done. That, that's a, I mean, these, staff works for you, right? You and Missy work for us and that's it. Okay, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to...
Motion to approve two items of consent. Second?
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Dr. Chase. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we have one action item this morning, this evening. 9.01, approval of the award of a change order.
Wait, I just want...
Oh, do you have an announcement?
Yeah, I'm just, a quick announcement, okay. She's been waiting very patiently, okay.
I know. Oh, my gosh, you've been so patient.
Yeah, so let me, and if I pronounce your last name wrong, it's due to Ms. Hazard. I guess I have no...
Accountability.
Come closer, so I don't have the cameras that can pick you up over there. Anyway, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Dr. Michelle Repass. How do you say, am I, okay. She will assume the position of Assistant Principal at Conway Elementary School. Michelle is currently the math specialist at Conway and has served in this role since 2017. She has over 20 years of experience as an elementary classroom teacher, having, having previously taught at Falmouth Elementary and the City of Fredericksburg Public Schools. Michelle was Falmouth Teacher of the Year in both 2009, 10, and 15, 16. That's pretty impressive. She's an instructor for foundations and teaching, a training offered to new teachers in Stafford and earned her National Board Certification as an Early Childhood Generalist in 2006. She earned her Bachelor of Arts Degree in History and Art History from Mary Washington College. She earned her Master's in Education, Early Childhood Education from JMU, woo-hoo. Dr. Repass earned her PhD in Teaching and Teacher Education from George Mason University and completed the requirements for her Administration Supervision License at the University of Mary Washington. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you and welcome, or welcome into your new position. You're already with us. That brings us to action items. 9.01, approval of the award of a change order in the amount of $197,763 for changes to the construction performance period and replenish the project contingency in the amount of $79,568.10 for the repair interior finishes project, A.G. Wright Middle School slash Garrisonville Elementary School. Do we have a motion on this item? We can have a discussion or questions, but we have to have a motion first.
Motion to approve item 9.01.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Decatur. Ms. Decatur, do you want to add one of these to Option 1 or Option 2 for funding it? Option 1 is to use the interest available from the closeout of VPSA Bond 2017A and Bond 2017C for a total of $277,331.10. And Option 2 is to defer non-committed A.G. Wright Middle School gym floor slash bleacher work for FY, to a, defer it to FY '20.
I, I would motion to approve 9.01 with Option 1.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can have a discussion. Any questions or comments? Ms. Hazard?
Always come to me. I, I do appreciate the additional information about the A.G. Wright school floor. My kids went there, so I'm, I'm very familiar with this. I think my concern, as I stated last time, is we seem to be doing the extra things and not the urgent things. And that makes me, me nervous and since we have to go and request across the street to our funding body about, you know, in that manner, do I think this is a worthy project? Yes. I guess I'm trying to still understand the non-committed funds. It looks like it was replaced in 2011 and then it has started to buckle and it's not fully compliant. I guess I'm just trying to continue to get an idea of how are we finding our non-code items and prioritizing them. I think it's more conceptual for me. I, I'm not going to say I'm, you know, I, I'm not against going to code. I'm more concerned, I think, about the process and I feel like I have to just state that part here because we have to go and ask for changes on this. I do not think we should defer an item that does not, it appears, meet code and that they think it's about to buckle. So I think we have to go with Option A, Option 1, but for me, the process is still bothersome for lack of a better way of saying it.
Any other comments? No? I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm going to support this motion because of the potential safety hazards. The item reads, "The temporary gym floor has exceeded its life and is beginning to buckle, which creates tripping hazards, prevents the efficient and safe operations of original bleachers. In addition to the fact that it reads, 'The original bleacher is not fully compliant with the Americans with Disability Act, cannot accommodate a full grade level and is reached its life expectancy.'" You know, I, you know, I, I share your, your concerns, Ms. Hazard, and perhaps that's something we can ask the superintendent to get back with us on, you know, at a later date, you know, and how we are identifying these. I mean, this happened to come up because we have a contract and now we have the opportunity to do a change order. But have we not had this situation with the change order coming in? Would this have come to the board and are there other issues at other schools that create a potential hazard that, you know, are not coming to, you know, to us for approval to, to make corrections for?
May I ask if the replaced gym floor bleachers is being done with, under the same contract as the repair finishes or is this now a separate contract that has to be let? May I, is that, can I at least ask that? Because if it's a savings and efficiency that it should be lopped with this contract, I get it.
And, and I, I interpreted change orders as a... And, and I, I interpreted change order as a change to the contract, so with the, with the contractor, but could be wrong.
So, to, several questions out there. The gym floor and gym bleachers are being done by separate contracts, not part of this contract. The change order is for the interior finish project. And all along, this project was identified, it's a, we borrowed it, we executed it with several, several contracts. One, the interior finishes is one contract of which the change order is being requested for that. And regardless of whether we do or do not do the gym floor, we still have to do this change order. It's because of the decreased performance period, as I mentioned to the board last time. The only reason the gym floor and the gym bleachers are non-committed at this time is because our plan was not to execute those portions of the overall project until this spring in preparation for the second summer. That is the only reason why they are not committed. We almost did that particular work last summer, but we chose to delay it till next summer, to this coming summer.
I don't remember that. I, I will go back and look on that.
Well.
I would very rarely defer.
Perhaps we can be more clear in the future when these come to the board? Because this says, the project includes, or this says, a work awarded to multiple contractors, but if we're talking about a change order.
The change order is specifically to the larger, larger project.
So, there's a completely different contractor that's not working on the building right now?
That's correct, ma'am. That was doing the gym floor, specifically a gym floor contractor. And we're replacing the bleachers with an equipment contract that does bleachers. We found that to be much more efficient and we've done that execution model in the past.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Hazard. I had the wrong understanding from the change order. All right, thank you. We can talk about that at another time. All right, all in favor, or any other questions, comments? No? All in favor of the motion to approve, um, with Option 1 as the funding mechanism? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
No.
Ms. Young? Madam Chair, motion passes four to three.
Thank you. That brings us to information item, 10.01, approve the award of a construction contract to RMT Construction and Development Group of Richmond, Virginia in the amount of $2,107,000, using Virginia Public School Authority Funds for the renovate North Star Early Childhood Education Center Project.
I'll make a motion that we, oh, I, because I don't have to make a motion.
It's information.
They would like us to move to action.
Great, I move that we move it from information to action.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'd just like to say, you know, I'm gonna vote no on this as well. And I'm, and I voted no on the last one. It's not that the AG Wright, or this, this, this does not need to be pushed forward in renovation, and we talked about this earlier. But, you know, I am continuing to see projects bounce in front of Ferry Farm. You know, we were briefed on 29 November, the Board of Supervisors and the, and this board, that the kids at Ferry Farm were breathing unhealthy air. And that was seven on seven. And I still, I'm waiting for either the AC unit or the basement to be done. And I hope the basement does, is, is done. But I just think it's, it's, it's not fair to my constituents and to the kids at Ferry Farm that we continue to throw millions of dollars into these schools that are so much newer than Ferry Farm, over and over again. And so, you can expect that if there's any renovation, there's any money going to school improvement, painting, then I'm voting no. And I'm voting on that based on what I just said. So, that's all I have to say.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, well, I, I believe, and, and maybe somebody can correct me if I'm incorrect, but if this renovation doesn't get done, then we can say we aren't redistricting, because we won't have North Star ready to open for all these early childhood special education children that are supposed to be moved there. So, I just wanna clarify that this is, not funding this would have interesting ramifications moving forward. I did have a question, though, of just how did this bid come in relative to what the estimate was?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Chase, if you can look on the agenda item, we had five bidders that provided full scopes. The overall total construction budget, which includes not only a budget for the general contract for this particular bid, but it has some playground equipment that we're going to get from a different contractor. I mean, it has some third-party contractor, like bringing certain utilities and things to the building. But, the budget that we had set for this particular portion of, out of the construction budget, was roughly 2.35, in that range. And so, obviously, it's below budget, so there's some savings there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right. Has this contract been reviewed by Ms. Charity across the street?
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask, before you bid it out, did you include a minority and a woman? And/or a woman bidder?
And what man?
In bidding, in this bid?
Well, we, we put it out for bid, for anyone to bid, for any group to bid. We did not, through the procurement process, the procurement office did not set aside it for a minority bid or a, some other set aside.
I'm not asking to set aside, I'm asking if they were included.
Of course, the entire public was. So, of course.
So, can you tell me who the minority was that bid on it, or the woman?
Well, I think this business is a small disadvantaged woman-owned business.
Okay.
If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty sure that was. But there was no requirement.
Oh, I understand.
For us to award it to anyone other than the low bid. Now, did the procurement office receive data on the makeup of the bidders? The answer is absolutely. And I do believe this bidder is a small woman-owned business.
Thank you.
But I, I don't have any other data for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Hazard?
Just a comment. You all who've sat with me long enough on the board know that I like to bring this one up every time. And, Mr. Haran, I know you can run out of the room when you hear me say it again. It would be really nice if the Board of Supervisors and the county would waive some of the permits and fees that schools pay for all these projects. It seems like such an artificial inflation of money that they are giving to us. It would really be nice if we could ever get that worked through a little bit more. I know, it's been, I've been on my soapbox since the planning commission on this, but, man, it would be nice. So, try not to, try and keep them, so. Anyway, I, I will be supporting this with our, with the bonds. I think this is an important project to move forward. I think we have other issues, other broader concepts we need to be talking about, but this is one we need to be moving forward at this time.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also will be supporting this. I didn't support 9.1, because as I stated earlier, I understand it was important. But, at the last board meeting, I remember that I wanted to make sure that we ensure that the money's being spent wisely. I know it was a safety hazard. There are safety hazard in many places also, so I'm trying to figure out how you rank them. Because I know Winding Creek also had urgent safety with the carpet and, you know, you were aware of that. But, most important, I know there was a HVAC issue at Ferry Farm. But this is different. As Dr. Chase stated, I had the same comment. If we don't get this done, then this whole redistricting is, is up in the air. So, this needs to get done. Thank you.
Ms. Decatur, do you have anything you wanna?
That will help us get to an answer.
I'm good, none, thank you.
So, I have a motion to move to action.
Right, so we're finished, we're finished the discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to move this item to action? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
To move it to action? I mean, you can say no if you want.
Sure, yes. Either, just somebody's gonna keep saying no.
Who's so proud before we're getting out early, come on?
So, I'd like to move that we approve, uh, hold on a second, I gotta find it. 10.02.
Second.
10.2, isn't it 10 points, okay, okay. Nine, nine point.
9.02.
9.02.
Second.
I would actually say, read the name of it, just so there's no confusion.
Sure. So, 9.02, approval of the award of a construction contract to RMT Construction and Development Group of Richmond, Virginia in the amount of $2,107,000, using Virginia Public School Authority Funds for the renovate North Star Early Childhood Education Center Project. No, no, no problem.
All right, all in favor, any discussion? Wait a minute, we had the motion, did we have a second?
Second.
I, I did the second.
Pam, Pam seconded it.
And Ms. Young seconded it, all right? Any discussion? No, all right, good, moving right along. All in favor of the motion to approve 9.02, as stated by Dr. Chase? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. No.
Okay. We'll give you that one.
No.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you pull the board, please?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
No.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That brings us to upcoming meetings. The next meeting of the school board.
See you next week.
Well, the next meeting of the school board is January 29th at 7:00 PM, which is next Tuesday. Special call, board meeting to receive the superintendent's FY '20 funding request. And that will be followed by a school board work session. We also have a town hall meeting tomorrow. It's the last town hall meeting scheduled on the redistricting at HH Pool at 7:00 to 8:30. Everyone's welcome to attend. We are now done. Yay.